We'll have a moment of silent meditation in the place of the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to order this meeting on Monongahia County Commission. All three commissioners are present today. It is January 15th.
I know. Wow.
Consent and approval, Renata.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, we have 24 exonerations for $4,520.83. Vouchers General County Fund, 268,240.57, 911, 1,957.21. Jefferson Ridge Park, 81.21. Camp Muffley, 5,728.50. Mason Dixon Park, 115.95. We allocated coal, 35,000. Assessors valuation, $1,450.65. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, 24,285.06. Coal severance, 1,003.54.79. 911, 10,009.33.40. Camp Muffley, 5.84.34. Mason Dixon Park, 2.08.27. Assessors valuation, 2,091.26. For a voucher total of $352,31.21. Position vacancies for boards and authorities. The West Run Board of Zoning Appeals, Mon County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Banned and Delapidated Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, and Mountain Line Transit Authority. District orders for January 15th, 2020.
Move for approval?
Second with discussion. Just for clarification, I know there were some questions about some invoices, and I'll get a clarification for the park. So that way I'll get that back to you.
Yeah, anytime I notice that there's finance charges where something was late in being submitted.
Yes, so I'll find out exactly, and I'll have that submitted to you before next week. Thank you.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You also have an issue on the agenda, petition for removal of executrix in the estate of Dewey Elefritz. This estate came before you, this petition came before you back in, I believe it was late November, and they had requested the executrix be removed. Both parties did attend that meeting, and you gave them a few weeks to get that settled. I had heard from the petitioner's attorney that things had not been moving along, so it was placed on today's agenda. I did get a call yesterday afternoon that said that they have come to some sort of agreement. Now, I did ask for something in writing from the attorney, and as far as I know, he was supposed to send it by the meeting today, but I have not yet received anything. But they are just asking for a continuance at this point.
I would move that we grant a continuance of 30 days.
Second.
Or we'll place it right back on the agenda.
Right. It's been properly moved and seconded for a continuance. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Introduction of new employees.
Morning.
Morning. How you doing?
Morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I have with me Jonathan Hostutler, who will be starting January 16th as a full-time home confinement officer, starting salary of $2,405.74 per month with full benefit.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The matter on the agenda, Justin Krieger with the Day Report Center. He is seeking to move, you do have one piece of information, that he is moving one position from part-time to full-time. And then, he was supposed to have a part-time introduction this morning, but apparently they have turned the job down. So he will have to come back at a later time. But you do have the one that's moving from part-time to full-time, Shay Huffman.
Motion for approval.
Move to approve?
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any other introductions of new employees? Just to ask, to be fair.
Not at all.
Okay. Thank you. We will now open for comments from the public. If you wish to speak, you will have three minutes. Come down, identify yourselves, and please also add rest. Thank you.
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Neil Leffwitch. I'm the minister at Spruce Street United Methodist Church, 386 Spruce Street here in Morgantown. And I just wanted to come and thank all of you for your support of the emergency overflow shelter that's taking place at Spruce Street United Methodist Church. It's taking place at that location, but there are many, many community partners that are participating, making this a reality in our community. And we've served over 100 of our neighbors so far in this season. It is truly a blessing and a privilege for me to simply be before all of you to make sure that you understand how appreciated it is your support. I'm thankful, but all of those who are working together to make this a reality in our community are also grateful as well. So I just simply wanted to say thank you. I don't know if anybody's thanked you guys yet today. Nobody has. Just know that you are greatly appreciated, and your work is greatly appreciated by more people than you know. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Here we go.
Good morning. My name is Jim Kotzen for 14 Tyrone Avery Road. I'm here today on behalf of the West Virginia chapter of the Sierra Club. And I wish I could thank you all, but I have to admit I am becoming increasingly concerned and disappointed about this commission. I am especially concerned about the proposed tax breaks that may be offered to the Longview II power plant. And I'm particularly concerned about the lack of information, the lack of transparency that has come out of this commission since we first approached you on this issue back in March of last year. And this really came to a head after the discussions and the closed session at the Board of Education meeting last night. I don't quite understand why the Board of Education held a closed session on the motion of the county commission. This was the Board of Education's meeting, not yours. As a result, I have prepared a Freedom of Information Act request asking for specific information, and I have copies for each of you.
Thank you.
This is a follow-up to an earlier request we had submitted last fall. I'm asking for additional information about any proposed tax breaks and the environmental assessments that are coming there too. The second document in that packet is a flyer that was produced that illustrates some of the issues with gas pipelines. I would call your attention to the photo in the upper right-hand corner of that page. That is the Trans-Canada Gas Pipeline. This is the pipeline that Longview would be getting their gas from. Six months after it opened in 2018, it blew up. Fortunately, it was in a remote area. All it did was incinerate 10 acres. How many 10-acre areas do we want to place at risk? The reason that I'm particularly concerned about it is primarily associated with the greenhouse gas emissions from yet another fossil fuel-fired power plant in this county. But I think the reason that you should be concerned about it is because of the tax implications that this provides. The final sheet is a copy of expert testimony that the Sierra Club submitted to the Public Service Commission demonstrating the need for more electricity, and to be blunt, there is none. The document shows a graph. The bottom green line illustrates the amount of reserve capacity for generation that the local regional transmission organization PJM needs. The second and top lines indicate all of the generation that they provide. If we provide yet another electric generating plant, it is not going to meet any existing need. It is going to compete with our existing power plants. What is the risk of closing either the Longview I plant or the Fort Martin plant and the property tax revenues that those plants generate by giving a tax break to yet another gas-fired power plant? Have you looked at that?
If you would, please give your summation, please.
That was it.
Okay.
Have you looked at that?
Thank you. Is there any other individual who wishes to speak at public comment? Thank you.
I'd like to move to suspend the rules to respond to the two individuals.
So moved.
Okay, first, let's start on the positive. Pastor Leffrich, I really do appreciate, no, we don't usually get thank yous. So we're very appreciative, and I would also ask, and I know that you're more than willing to do, to keep an update so that if it is a cold winter and there has to be more funds allocated, that we're aware of it. I think this is the first time we've ever had anyone actually show up to talk to us about it. So on behalf, and I don't know if any other commissioners want to say since, I want to thank you very much. I don't know if anyone else wants to say anything before I go to option point two.
It's a very great effort, and we do appreciate that. And I do have all four written thank yous that I have received in my five years as a county commissioner.
No, I want to say thank you. I appreciate your thoughts, but you're on the front line doing this. The thanks is really due to you, or owed to you for all that you and your organization do. So I thank you.
On the second issue, Mr. Kotzen, I believe that there needs to be some clarification. You are correct, the Board of Education opened up their meeting for a work session, but we had recessed our meeting and continued our meeting down at the Board of Education and went into executive session. That is the policy and that is the procedure. The reason why we do that is if you look at 6-9A-4-9, you'll see very clearly why we need to do that in discussions for this actual final agreement. But I do want to bring up something since you're here, since I think it's very important for the public to know. Do you know, and if I can ask this question to you, do you know how much money you've received since 2011 from this Longview Pilk program?
My understanding is that the initial payment was several million dollars, it was approximately $2 million a year since 2011.
Okay. You've received exactly $4 million. Now, as part of the agreement for the taxpayers, for the Board of Education and the county commission, what you were supposed to do was come up with a stream and forest remediation program. You spent only $355,400 on that, less than 10% of the funds that were given to you. My question is, I'd appreciate if, and I understand you can't do it now, but I'd appreciate you come back next week and give an update on why you only spent less than 8% of the funding for the programs that were part of the grant or the part of the lease agreement. So in other words, if I give to a nonprofit $100 and I expect $100 to go to them, you only used $8 of it. So I think for the public's record, I would appreciate if you would come back next week with a clarification on where these funds went and how you spent them. Because that was part of the agreement, which I'm very confused, you only spent 8%. So that is a concern. As you come before us, I think the public also needs to know what you did and didn't do with that money. And to the point that if you cannot explain it, I am more than willing to be the person to turn it over to the prosecutor's attorney to ask them to ask the questions of where that money went. That is my concern, sir. And I would appreciate.
You're asking about the payment of taxes in the county?
You, no. You received exactly Appalachian Stewardship Foundation received money, part of the Sierra Club, $4 million. You have only spent $355,400. And you're telling us about the funding and you have a concern? I have a real concern about our funds, the Board of Education's funds and the taxpayer funds, when you got $4 million and only spent $355,000 since 2011. That's all I'd like to say.
Done.
I forgot nothing.
Okay. We are, we're not putting a debate here, okay?
I simply want to say I will be here next week.
Thank you. Thank you. No, we would appreciate that, okay? Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Otherwise, we will close this portion, okay? Considering the presentation by Dr. Smith, Dr. Smith was unavailable to come today, so we will reschedule his remarks regarding the quick response team. I don't see Colleen here. Renata, do we have any grants?
Yes.
Okay.
The Community Development Block Grant for MAYSP, the reimbursement request is for $4,274.66. And that is for the month of December. For the JJP grant, I believe this is also for MAYSP for the month of November 2029.63. And this is the Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant, $410.72 for the month of December. There's another Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant, 2,012.21. And the VOCA grant for also the month of December, $6,902.72.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Correspondence.
Just have a few items.
Okay.
First of all, we've received yesterday in the mail the financial performance report for the Mountain Line Transit Authority as per the levy agreement. And then also in regards to that, they have submitted a resolution and their order, or their requested order for the commission to put the transit levy on the May of 2020 ballot. So we will, obviously that's for the record, so we will then, assuming that you all would agree, send that on to the auditor's office for their review to see if there's any problems with the wording and the calculations.
No, I would, yeah, I was surprised that we did receive that. I wasn't aware, so I haven't looked at it yet. So I would say that the commission should look at it in a work session, and if there's no obvious issues with it, then forward it on to the auditor's office for review.
Okay. The one other item I have is from Ms. Paula Hunt. She has written a letter to the commission dated January 7th regarding payment in lieu of taxes for Longview II. That is it.
Okay. Thank you. Any unfinished business? Hearing none, we will go to new business. First is consideration to requisition number 37 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development's district subaccount.
The request is for $4,1,173.51.
And this is the regular quarterly deposit of, or monthly deposit of the funds into the account. So I move to approve requisition 37 as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To consider appointment to the West Run Board of Zoning Appeals.
You have had, Kent Pauley has been serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals for quite some time. His position has expired, but he does wish to be reappointed, and we have been advertising that with no new candidates.
And I spoke to him personally this past weekend at fairs and festivals, and he reiterated his desire to continue to serve.
Move to approve the appointment as presented?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration to approve the contract of sublease by and between the Monongahia County Commission and the state of West Virginia by the Department of Administration Real Estate Division on behalf of the Department of Agriculture for office space at the Monongahia County Extension Services and 4H Center.
This is the, I say draft, it's in final form, it's ready to be routed pending our approval through the state for approval. It would go to the governor's office, the West Virginia Department Administration Real Estate Division, and the Department of Agriculture, and then it would become back, and then we would approve it formally in another meeting. But this is the first step, the initial approval, and this is for our space at the extension building where Ag will be occupying space in that building. So it's the first step to formalize that agreement. So I'd move that we approve the contract of sublease as presented for routing through appropriate state government offices.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration to approve the West Virginia Land Trust and Mon Rivers Trail's conservancy request to use Camp Muffley Dining Hall free of charge for the Blue Gene Ball event on April 4th, 2020.
Move for approval and a discussion.
Second.
Basically, this is what we've done each year. We've allowed them to have facility, and they have a very huge turnout, and it's been a very great fundraising for both groups.
Yes. I agree, because the use of our facilities sometimes is requested, and we're working for the public here. So any other discussion? It's been properly moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Lastly, to consider approval of change order number two regarding the proposed subdivision regulations for the preparation of transportation guidelines.
Move for approval with discussion.
Second.
If you could suspend the rules to allow Andrew to speak.
Yeah.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Gasprey, Director of Planning for Monongahia County. This has been an interesting and, I think, very worthwhile process for the county of Monongahia. The original intent, very rightly, was to come up with a subdivision ordinance that would be very typical of almost all subdivision ordinances across the country. With the great amount of public interaction we've had and the needs that Monongahia County expressed, in particular access management and stormwater management, which were exceptional here because of the topography and nature of Monongahia County, a traditional standard subdivision ordinance was really not quite enough to make sure or to ensure that we're getting better quality development from those two aspects. Consequently, the original contract that with the lawyers and engineers that were writing the code for the original subdivision ordinance, they stayed on, and that was the first extension that you've already approved. Given some of the challenges, though, with West Virginia having different set of rules by which they manage things like subdivision ordinances, it's very difficult to enforce some of the precepts that came out of what the public want, basically stormwater protection and access management protection. So we have approached this from a slightly different manner, trying to go with an incentive-based rather than a requirement-based approach, and that's a lot more difficult. And so that has taken a little bit more time, and that is what this extension is doing. If it weren't going to lead to some really good results, which I think the early phases of this are very positive, and we've even had some praise nationally on this, because I participate with a national group on this, I would say it's not worth going this extra route. But I think that since we are making progress on an incentive-based program in the subdivision ordinance to help encourage good and better development for Monongahia County, I think that this extension is worthwhile.
And in addition, Andrew, could you give us an update on the expected timeline? I know things have moved a little bit, but those are good things. We're having a lot of conversations with the public. We're forwarding a lot of people to you, information to you to address, so that we get a lot of the concerns addressed. So that shifted the timeline, and if you could provide an update on the timeline?
Yes. Sorry, I should have mentioned this earlier. So the original timeline was largely targeting May, and then we had the extension, as I said, for that extension two, which you have ratified. The last bit is going to take a little longer because we've been working hand and glove with DOH. We've been working with developers to come up with something that's doable. We've been working with bankers and financiers to make sure that this, because what we can really offer is time and efficiency savings, which is where the incentives come from, to encourage better development by working in a way to make it easier to do the better, right kind of development for Monongahia County. Consequently, we are looking to get some of that language reviewed. We are probably looking that instead of the original timeline, which was looking at a March 1st enactment, so it would be some sort of voting and then go into effect March 1, it's probably going to be more like May 1, I would think at this point, because you need to have 30 days when you have the final draft to then have it reviewed by the public before the public hearing, and then at that point, you would want to have enough time to say, oh gee, we've got to put this in place. And the challenge with that is, even if, assuming everything goes gangbusters, you still have to get an appeals board appointed, and you have to get a county engineer contract in place. So you need a little bit of delay. So I am foreseeing May 1 for the actual putting in. It doesn't, it's not worth getting those contracts and the board set up if we weren't going to come up with a satisfactory subdivision ordinance.
So for the people's, for the people's perspective, we anticipate public hearings would be around what time?
In March, I'm thinking of.
So people can weigh in on.
Yes.
And again, get a.
A final review.
An unvarnished, here's the actual product, here's your chance to review and provide any input, and then commission will take all that in consideration.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. We appreciate all your.
He did.
Yes, we appreciate all your hard work. It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I can remember.
Yes. Is there any other new business?
No, sir.
No. Just to check, to make sure. Reports from elected officials, hearing?
I'll just report that we did open candidate filing on Monday of this week. It will continue through Saturday, January 25, and we will be open Saturday morning from 9 until noon for the purpose of candidate filing only. That's per the West Virginia Code. So we do post every day a list of the candidates that have filed, not only with our office on the local level, but also we post a list of the candidates that have filed with the Secretary of State in Charleston so that the citizens can see all of the candidates that should appear on our Monongahia County ballot.
Gearing up for elections.
Once again.
Sorry.
Well, nobody does as credible a job as you two.
We're very appreciative.
In the state with our elections, and I know this for a fact. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Are there any other reports from elected officials? Hearing none? Tom?
Mine, I only have one thing to say, and I'm glad Mike Paul is here. We did have a meeting concerning the census, and what we have decided tentatively set up is on February 3rd. There are still 1,500 applications still to be had for appointments and positions for census workers and takers in Mon County. So we will be setting up on February 3rd, three different locations. One here, one at the library at night, and one at WVU to offer three different times so people could go in and apply for one of those positions. We'll get more information, and then hopefully we will get on the radio, and then I'm going to hope Ben will be willing to do a small article beforehand to inform the public. But that, I just want to thank Mike, we've been working on this and coordinating, and we now have a date. Thank you.
It's been a busy, busy week.
It's been a busy, busy week since last meeting. Last Thursday, I had a red team meeting, Development Authority meeting, and then we had a work session after that. Friday, I had a breakfast appointment, afternoon work session meeting. Saturday, I had the MAP Executive Committee meeting in the morning, and then we had the MAP Strategic Planning Retreat through early afternoon. This week, we have the MMMPO Policy Board Workshop on Monday. Yesterday, I had a monthly breakfast meeting with the BOE President and Joe Statler. I had our Joint Use Management Committee meeting with Myland Park regarding the aquatics facility. We had an afternoon work session, and then we had an evening work session. Wednesday seems, today's full day, and then at the end of the day today, I have an afternoon meeting with the city manager. Tomorrow, we have our MMMPO Policy Board meeting, and Friday, we have our Extension Building meeting. Monday is a federal holiday, so I wish all of our county employees a well-deserved long weekend, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. After Friday, I did go to Canal County, and I did meet with their fiduciary commissioner with George Armistead, seeing how the system of fiduciary commissioner works in their county. I spent the rest of the weekend in Charleston at the Fairs and Festival, representing Monongahia County, as did our three queens from the Patel District, Clay District, and the Monongahia County Fair. They, I'm very proud of what they did. We did not have anybody placed in the top 15, but still, this is, this is something that is near and dear to me, particularly with the fair. Monday, did have a really good radio show with Dave and Sarah on the morning show, and that was with Darby Clayton. We went over and allowed him to give the presentation that he actually gave at commission to inform the public as to what's going on relative to the roads and what they can expect, hopefully, in the future. Sean, I believe, has detailed everything else, with the exception, Friday, we will be meeting, our meeting was postponed from Tuesday at the 4-H and Extension Center on that building. So that being said, I'll entertain.
I would like to say one other thing. You know, there was accusations that brought up in public session that we are somehow not being transparent. This, this commission is the most transparent commission. I challenge anybody to find, find an example across the state that's more transparent than us. Yes, we have meetings and executive session, but, because you don't negotiate in, in, in public. There's things to get to an agreement, you have to keep confidential, and I think any businessperson would understand that. I think the point that, for gentlemen from the Sierra Club, I think the point that Mr. Bloom was trying to make was, I appreciate every, every comment that comes in this office, and we consider everything that comes before us. We do, we do put a lot of sweat and equity and work into everything we discuss, and we've been discussing this thing for months, so we do look at all the angles. We have to weigh all the pluses and minuses, but we do appreciate the input from, from groups. I think the point that Mr. Bloom, Commissioner Bloom, was trying to make was, I think if the Sierra Club is going to put itself out there as a spokesman for these events, they should also be transparent. And what he was pointing out was the last agreement with the last Longview One agreement, Sierra Club entered into an agreement with Longview. In my view, it's to stop protesting the original plan. So they were paid an amount of a million dollar, or half a million dollars a year to create, they were supposed to create a nonprofit group.
Right.
That would further the message that the Sierra Club is supposed to be putting out there, forest remediation, the streams, those type of issues. And the point that was made was, since that agreement has been in place, there's $4 million been paid out, and there's only 350 that was spent, and we're not even know if it was spent in this area. Another large portion of that was spent on lawyers for, and again, kind of ironic that probably to fight the second agreement and probably push for another agreement. So that's the point, that, you know, we're transparent, but please be transparent when you're, when you're coming to public meetings and making statements. The public ought to know that, that, you know, there was an agreement out there. I didn't know about it till we start talking about this current agreement, and I think a lot of people in the public don't know about that. So, you know, that, that transparency door should swing both ways, so that's all I have.
I do agree. I will withhold my remarks, because I am an ardent conservationist. Anybody who knows me knows that I plant at least 500 trees every year. I graft apple trees, but I will wait for the information presented to me before I make any comment regarding what is done with the funding. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.